However, there's been some concern in the community that the order that the charter itself says that the Board has the authority to order cases reopened. And we would respectfully suggest that the Council may want to consider clarifying language in the ordinance to make it clear in the ordinance as well as in the, um, as well as in the charter, which obviously you can't do without a vote of the people that closed cases are the, are not subject to be ordered being reopened, um, by the Board. Does that make sense? That's pretty much the extent of, it's a pretty short report. I'm much in favor of short reports, um, also whether written or verbally. So that's pretty much the extent of my report on this, and I'm happy to take questions. I should also indicate who the other members of the Board are. Steve McIntyre, who is currently serving as Vice Chair of the Board, I'm not sure.
Are they here?
I'm not sure anyone's here. They generally allow me to do these functions on my own. Eric Van Houten is a member of the Board. Deb Valour is a new member, as is George Rhodey. Snell Fontis is our most senior member of the Board. And Bernadette Conover is a member of the Board, as well as myself. As you know, you increased the Board size from five to seven a couple of years ago. We now have a full component of seven members.
Thank you. I think we all appreciate short, short reports. And the first person I have is Andrea.
Well, thank you, Counselor Taylor. So you kind of lost me at the end there, Tim. I do have some comments, but so there's a connection definitely between us defining good cause, community impact cases, and the authority, whether CRB has the authority or not to reopen cases. I think those are all three connected because they're talking about things that, in my mind, have been dealt with. And to this, to the Board's liking, they're not totally, is it my understanding that the consensus would be on the CRB that they would like to have it reopened, or that they feel this is a community impact case, or there's a good cause to reopen it?
Uh, no, there's not consensus on the Board. Um, but there is, there was some concern on the Board expressed that the Charter indicates that the Board has the authority to reopen or send back investigations for further investigation. While the ordinance, which according to my understanding, my personal understanding, is the implementing language of the Charter, says very clearly that the only case in which that occurs can be in a community impact cases. So I guess what the Board would like to see, or at least at the time they considered this, would the ordinance be very clear about that as far as the Charter is concerned as well? That's something. Regarding community impact case designations, there's no disagreement that authority last, lies solely with the auditor.
Okay.
And exclusively with the auditor. The suggestion was that the auditor may want to consider conferring with the Board as individuals or others before making that designation. It's a suggestion only. It was never meant to imply that that authority should be changed. And regarding, um, good cause, it was suggested that perhaps in some form or fashion that be defined. There are some state, other than just the phrase, "good cause."
Well, you know, that kind of makes sense to me because I feel like, um, that is really individual. It could be at the discretion of who was ever on the Board at that time.
It's actually up to the auditor.
Or the auditor.
Yeah.
What I would like to see is, I don't know how you feel about this, Mark, but, um, I wonder if there would be a matrix that you could come up with, or that the Board could discuss on what, like a, you know, like a defining moment kind of of what that would, what a good cause would be. Because I think that people, you know, if you think about the gentleman that's been coming back to us at Council, who's had issues, and, I mean, we have, I mean, I wouldn't necessarily discount his complaint, I wouldn't discount his complaint, but, um, just in situations like that where there's a lot of energy still around an issue, I think that that could be considered a good cause. But I would like more of your input, Mark, on what exactly that would be, and maybe just a memo or something along that line of what your thoughts are along that would work for me.
Well, on the, on the good cause issue, actually, we, we have a definition that we haven't got to the Board yet. It's, it's kind of a, more of an administrative process. I think with regard to the case that I think you're speaking of, it ultimately, it's up to the civilian review board about whether or not they would want to review that case. It was, there was a deadly force review done, so they have decided, it doesn't have to do with the timeline, they've, they've decided not to review it at this point in time.
That's fine.
And so that, I think that's the difference. Uh, in terms of the cases being reopened, I, I think the catalyst for it was not whether or not they thought that the investigation was complete or not, or needed refined. It was the ultimate decision by the Chief was the catalyst for the request. So, um, uh, I don't think anybody had a quibble, and correct me if I'm wrong, about the quality of the investigation, which I think is spoken for in, in the ordinance, it was the decision. And so, um, whether or not Council would want the CRB to direct the Chief to reopen his decision or not, I think is a separate issue.
That case aside, I'm just talking in general.
Yeah.
You know, I'm not questioning the outcome of that particular case. I have a couple of comments. I really appreciate the newsletter that comes out. I, um, spend time looking at it online, and it's really interesting, the comparisons of things that are happening in other communities. I don't know if anybody's had the chance, but there was a, an article about the San Diego Police Department and their issues. And I found that, the reason that really piqued my interest, and I read it thoroughly, was because they, at one time, their civilian review board did much, did many presentations at a couple of different naikles that I went to about their processes. And so, I think that, um, I guess the moral of the story would be that, um, whether or not, not whether or not we have a review board that is continually looking at these things, it's like that we have to be vigilant about this because, at one time, I understood San Diego had like model type of urban legend. I don't know if it's true or not, Mark, you have inside information, but I just, you know, I just, I'm just glad that, um, the work is being done, and I appreciate the work that the Board does.
Next is, um, George Brown, and then I have Alan and Pat. Did I miss anything?
Thank you. Um, I've just got a couple of questions. In the CRB's review of the auditor on number three, community and citizen relations, it doesn't really have anything to do about the auditor's performance, but one of the individual suggestions for improvements would, and one of the bullet points is involve CRB members in community outreach.
Mm-huh.
And I'm sure you must have discussed that to some degree. What, what kind of conclusions did you reach? What might be useful for the Board?
Well, attending, maybe it would be on a volunteer basis, but possibly attending neighborhood meetings, going to different events that may occur in the community. I think recently the police department had a prevention presentation, or a prevention convention.
Right.
Those sort of things.
Okay.
Being involved in that, so giving another face in just the auditor's office on events and community interactions.
Yeah, good. I think the more information people have about it, the, the better it would be. Did you just, and the one, same deal, it's not, doesn't, it's not a reflection on the auditor's performance or anything like that, but the next one, number four, complaint intake and adjudication recommendations, one of the individual suggestions is have the Human Rights Commission more involved with intake process. Did you, can you give me a precis, just a kind of a breakdown of the discussion?
We had a pretty involved discussion around the Human Rights Commission. Dr. Fontis, Snell Fontis, who acts as a liaison with the Human Rights Commission on those discussions. Back in 2005, 2006, when the oversight system was set up, one of the suggestions that was made was that possibly the Human Rights Commission might be involved as advocates for people, if they wished it, who had complaints, to walk them through the process, to have them come in and represent the point of view of the complainant to some extent or other. There was some discussion among some members of the Human Rights Commission, that the Human Rights Commission should be able to weigh in on classification of complaints. And we didn't think, nor does the ordinance provide for that, that that was appropriate. We felt that should be better left with the professional that the Council hires for that regard. But possibly any type of process, particularly with City Hall, can be somewhat intimidating for people, so having someone there that can help explain the process and walk them through the process, you know, and understand what the Office of the Police Auditor does, help people understand what the Office of the Police Auditor does and what it doesn't do, and what it can't do, we thought might be a good role for the Human Rights Commission.
Right, yeah, yeah. There's, there's still, in some of the public's mind, there's still some ambiguity about the exact role of the auditor. That's true. Uh, okay, let's see. Well, you know, as far as your recommendations go, I think they're all good. I think they're all good recommendations. I agree with them, and I, um, I'll just focus on the, the last one, CRB authority to order cases reopened. There, I mean, you know, the ordinance, the Charter says one thing, and then, my, my understanding is there, the distinction is between community impact cases and non. You can open a non-case, but not a community impact case? Or do I have it backwards?
Well, under the ordinance as designed, the Board has the ability to send the case back to the, or to recommend to the Chief of Police that the case be, go back to be investigated further in the case of a community impact case. For a variety of reasons, some of them legal, it does not have that authority, or I don't believe it was ever intended to have that authority on closed cases, because the due process has been done on closed cases. The case in particular that caused this to arise was a closed case, drew quite a bit of community attention. It was the Chinese students' case. A majority of the Board at that time, I think it was a three to two vote, voted to send it back for further investigation. That was a closed case and, or four to three, I can't remember what it was, if we had seven at that time or not, but it was a narrow split vote. In a closed case circumstance, the question was, the Charter is unclear. It says that the Board has the authority to order investigations, or to request that the Chief order investigations be reopened. But the ordinance was very clear that that was only in the case of closed cases. To some extent, they were, we were hoping that the Council might be able to possibly modify the ordinance to make it clear that at least as far as the Council is concerned, the intention was only for community impact cases. That was part of the rationale behind community impact cases to begin with, is that there are going to be some events that occur that are enough magnitude that, as opposed to looking at a closed case review for quality assurance and performance evaluation purposes, that the Board should be able to weigh in before the final adjudication is meant.
Right, okay. Well, you were on the committee that, that looked, made all the recommendations to change some of these procedures, as, as was Counselor Pryor and Counselors Alenka. And I watched a lot of those and attended a lot of them. Ones I didn't attend, I saw most of them on TV. Do you have anything to add to what, what Tim just said about, I'm just wondering what the reasons were for distinguishing between community impact cases and non-community impact cases? What the, the CRB's-
That really didn't come up in the Payor Committee.
Can you talk about that?
That came up in the design and the model. The reason for the distinction was, um, that one, it'd be a double jeopardy for the officers to some extent. You will have already gone through an administrative process, you will have made a decision, and then all of a sudden you're saying that, okay, we'll go back and do this again because of the recommendation of a body that does not possibly have the level of knowledge required to do that. Two, it would be very hard in terms of employment law to maintain any discipline or any decisions that come out of that. There's quite a bit of examples of that in arbitrations between. And three, it was never intended that the Board be sitting in the position of a judgment on the adjudications of cases. The Board is intended to be a quality assurance and performance evaluation body. And in terms of evaluating the investigations for thoroughness and completeness, that was why they hired, have, you have hired an auditor, and the model is set up. What the Board's role to do, role is, is to look, and from a civilian or community perspective, see if we feel that the cases were handled well by the auditor to the extent that he made sure, or she makes sure, the Office makes sure that the investigations are thorough and complete, things aren't missed. Levels of communication exist not only from the community, but also with the department, so things don't get dropped, and that we comment to the Council and the community as whether we think the Office is functioning as intended, so.
Okay. Does the Board have any, um, suggestions for revisions of the ordinance? Have you-
Just to the extent-
Pass on to us, like specific language?
At this point, the only thing that I think that there feels like there might be a little more clarity on is that the, that the Council weigh in as to the fact that it does not, or that the ordinance did not intend for the Board to have the ability to reopen closed cases. That's my suggestion. The suggestion, I think, from the Board level was that the Council might want to take a look at it because of the ambiguity between the Charter and the ordinance. And there's not a conflict there, it's just that the Charter is silent as to whether it involves both closed cases and open cases, whereas the ordinance is very clear that it involves closed cases.
Sure, okay. Thank you.
Alan is next.
Mark, can you get us more specific language, like what the ordinance says, what the Charter says, and what the issue is on that particular one? I'm a little, little, still a little confused about this, and a little bit confused about the timing. I understand the Chinese student case was closed. If it's a community impact case, how does it get to the point where it's closed, and then the CRB?
It doesn't get closed. Community impact cases are not closed. The police is chief when they come to the, to the Board. The Chief of Police will make a preliminary determination on the case, but before it is finally closed, it comes to the Board for their review. And at that point in time, the Board comments on it and can ask the other lines of inquiry. The whole point behind the reopening was not necessarily because the Board would agree or disagree with the determination or the adjudication made by the Chief of Police, or indicated by the Chief of Police, but rather if the Board thought there were some lines of inquiry that hadn't been followed up, that there were some facts that hadn't been considered. So it's not closed until after the Board weighs in on community impact cases, wherein all other, we've only had one community impact case in the city of, in the history of the city.
Chinese student one was not a community impact case.
It was not a community impact case. That's correct. That's correct.
So, um, so if we were, so the fact that the Charter says that the Council shall authorize the citizen review board to require the city reopen investigations, and they were talking about community impact in the Charter, about community impact cases, but the ordinance is silent in that regard. Is that, did I get that right?
No. The Charter says, I'm looking at it right now. The Charter says that the Board has the authority to require the, um, Department to reopen cases, and doesn't say whether it's closed cases or open cases. So there's some ambiguities.
Community impact cases.
Right, right. The ordinance says very clearly, only in the circumstance of community impact cases may the Board require that it be reopened.
Or actually, it stays open as a community impact case until the Board weighs in with their decisions, and then pushes it to the Chief to make his final determination.
Right.
A closed case is the Chief put, has already made his final determination and pushes it to the Board.
So what would be the clarification that we, that the CRB is requesting on the, of the ordinance?
I think the Board is requesting that the ordinance states specifically, or the Council states specifically, that the intention was that the Council, the Board's ability to ask the Chief of Police to reopen an investigation pertained only to community impact cases, not to closed cases.
But if it stays open, what do I, what do we need to reopen it for? But you said the community impact case stays open.
No, it's closed cases that people have worked, in the case of the Chinese students, the Board was asked-
Not a community impact case.
That's correct.
Right.
But there were some members of the Board who felt that the Charter allowed the Board to ask that. There were other members of the Board who didn't. That's the rub here.
Yeah, I think our attorney wants to say something.
Well, right now, what we're operating on is kind of the negative implication that we have. We have, the, the code is very specific that they can, it's not closed when there's a community impact case, and you have the preliminary investigation, the CRB has the authority to send it back. And by negative implication is that they have the authority nowhere else. And I think what the Board is asking is, let's be more specific than just negative implication. Let's actually have the-
Be explicit.
Let's be explicit and say, you can do it here, no other time. So it's just really a clarification of what is there, but it's there quietly.
So I concur with that recommendation. On the community impact case designations, I would, Mark, what's your, any of your thoughts about whether or not the Council should require you confer with the CRB and before you make the determination? It's your determination, and we vested you with that determination, but.
Um, the agreement we reached with the CRB is, I would discuss it with them, if it was in that area that we might want to consider it for a community impact case. Whether or not you want to make that legislation or not is really kind of, I think, more of a political decision than an administrative decision. I'm comfortable making the decision myself because that's what I'm required to do. If Council thinks that it should be decided in another way, shape, or form, then I'll work under that as well, so.
But your current practice is that you do confer.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's a matter of whether or not we're going to make that permanent and part of the ordinance.
I would say I'm neutral on your question, so.
Okay. Because you already do it.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think the Board's point in that discussion was that, that we're not going to require the auditor to confer, but we just would express in our policies and procedure manner and operating manual that we would expect that if the auditor had questions about the designation, he could confer with Board members about that, or the Board about that. I don't think there was any expectation. The ordinance is very clear, and this did come out of the Police Auditor Ordinance Review Committee discussion when the ordinance was changed. The ordinance is very clear that the classification of complaints rests solely and, I don't know what to, and solely and completely with the Police Auditor's Office, because there had been some concern that cases had been reclassified after being classified initially by the auditor's office. And both the Payor Committee and the Council in this revisions to the ordinance didn't want that to occur. And I think that's, for myself, I think that's entirely appropriate.
Right, I agree. Okay. Can I remember that discussion on the Payor? So definition of a good cause, other than mark of dimes, what is, what's the definition, Mark?
I don't have one handy I can, we've, recently Glenn and I have worked one out, I think, again, when you read case law about it, it's, again, kind of left up to an administrative decision. There's no real case law that says, this is good cause. So I think we came up with something reasonable, and I can get that out to Council and the CRB and see if that's palatable.
Would that be a revision to the ordinance?
No.
That would just be, be our role in that, if you guys agree to what's the definition?
I wouldn't think that you'd have a role unless you wanted a role.
I don't necessarily want a role, but I would like to see the definition.
Yeah. We'll get that to you.
And the public disclose, the public information disclosure.
This was several months ago, if not longer, and I remember this coming up with regard to what we could not say and what we could not reveal to the public when an issue came up. And maybe you could refresh our memory about what that was and what the Attorney General's specifically looking at that might impact the way that we do things.
Currently, there are two conflicting statutes in Oregon law regarding public disclosure. And the human resources, or the employee, community, or the, what is the word I'm looking for? The collective bargaining statutes, it says that cases that are decided that do not involve discipline are not, are subject, can be open for public scrutiny. In the exceptions to the public meetings law, police officers, public safety officers, as well as teachers, their records, whether discipline is imposed or not, are exempt. One of the, so that regardless, and the case materials that we're looking at, they cannot be disclosed, whether they're, they're unfounded, whether they're not sustained, as long as so. There is no, because of that exception, we cannot share the information that we review. When we do a case review, we'll spend anywhere from four to six to eight hours individually looking at the elements that went into the case, listening to the interviews, watching the in-car videos, reading the reports. And then we spend about an hour discussing it, but all of the information that we have is confidential and precluded from the community. In cases, there was some feeling in it is mine as well, that in cases where the officer is either exonerated or found to have acted within policy, the public's ability to be able to review that information would give the public more confidence that these cases had been investigated thoroughly and completely. We are not allowed to do that under Oregon law right now. That is, and at the time that this report was written, the legislature was still in session, and I believe the Attorney General was looking at revising the public meetings law to look at some of the exceptions. I don't believe anything ultimately ended up occurring on that, so.
It's not, I got pushed out as opposed to, we're not doing anything.
I don't know what the result was, it is, I do know-
He didn't get any traction on his efforts so far, to my knowledge, because I, I think there's, was it 348 exemptions to the public records law in Oregon, or 440 something?
And so-
And, yeah.
So the distinction being whether isn't a-
Where there's no discipline involved.
disciplinary action, therefore, because of the conflicting laws, we build confidence to be able to talk about it as opposed to, we're not asking about cases where, or situations where there was a discipline.
Correct.
And it's confidential, and it should be.
Correct.
And I agree with that. So that would require us to, maybe next legislation or this interim legislation, not very likely, to propose legislation to have this be an exception to the public meetings law.
Would you like to be put down for another round, Alan?
Yeah, I think at least.
That was my last question, if I don't want to respond.
Go ahead, Kathy.
It really is, there's kind of, there's two different laws that are functioning. One is, lives under the public records law, which is when discipline was imposed, and it is an exception to disclosure under public records law, which is the documents that have the investigation that resulted in discipline. And then there's a separate statute that relates specifically to public safety officers that's a confidentiality law, and it's ORS 181-854, which is separate from public records law that says, when no discipline imposed, the investigation documents are confidential. So you're dealing with, they live in two different places, they have two different things. So, um, yes, it would need to be a statutory change, because 181-854 says, if there's no discipline imposed, they're confidential. So you can't release them unless you make a determination under one of these findings. And there's a couple of exceptions even to that confidentiality law. Unlike public records exemptions that say, basically, they're ours to keep or give away. I mean, something can be exempt, and we could still choose to release it. This confidentiality law, it's under step fruit statute, says, they're confidential unless you can make an explicit finding to the contrary, so.
Right. That's very complex. It would take a lot more discussion.
Yes.
Pat?
Thank you, Madam President. A couple of things. One, you know, Alan, I have to express my admiration for your ability to turn three minutes on this clock into 20 minutes on that clock. Excellent.
That's my pocket.
Two minutes and 59 seconds to figure that out.
That's a skill.
Thank you so much, Kathy.
That's your time going.
And Counselor, Tim, I'm really glad you're on the phone. You have a little good ability to clarify what sometimes can be pretty muddled informations that were stated throughout your presentation. But I will say that one time, when, years and years ago, when you and I served on the Council together, you had punished me for carrying a public charter with me. And now I see you're carrying a public charter with you.
I don't recall that, but. I don't remember that.
I have it.
I know I admonished you, I just don't remember I admonished you for that.
The question that I had really was for the auditor, and it's regarding more a comparison of his experience is, you know, on the ground experience of our civilian review board versus what you've experienced in Cincinnati in the past. But since it's more for personal, out of personal information, personal curiosity, I will not take up any more minutes on that clock and ask you, you know, sometime I'd like to hear how we compare to what you've, what you've seen in the past.
Yeah, enough to.
And, um, one last question for the, for Counselor, for Tim. And one last question for the, for Councilor, for Tim. I wrote down that the council should reaffirm the board is not authorized to open closed cases. Can you correct my verbiage on that, or is that-
I think the city attorney expressed it pretty well. There's a negative assumption that goes along here. So to some extent, I think the council needs to clarify for the community and others that as far as the ordinance is concerned, what is pretty clearly stated, the board does not have the authority to reopen closed cases where the chief has made a decision, regardless whether that decision is sustained, unsustained, unfounded, lack of information, or whatever that might be. There are, there's a lot of reasons for that, so-
So for the, for the good of the operation of the board, it would be good for the council.
Well, I think there's some community expectations that have to do with a misunderstanding to some extent of what the board's role is.
Perhaps the manager can address that at some point and see how to mechanically take care of that with this medical. Thank you very much.
Judge Pauling?
All right, reference to the community impact cases. Mark, when you're doing this voluntarily conferring with the CRB on these things, have you ever run into any timeliness issues as far as dealing with a particular case and getting it to the next step? Something that you have to schedule out in advance, or do you call Camp Fire somewhere and get all together and discuss it? How do you handle it?
I don't think, after the, again, I think the catalyst for the board's concern was the Chinese student taser case that happened in August of '09. Since that time, I don't think there's anything that's sort of caught their attention that I, or caught my attention that would fall under that category. So I haven't had that issue yet.
That would be my biggest concern, if it caused a delay in being able to get together with the CRB and go over these things. And also that if this is put into the ordinance where it is required that the auditor meet and confer with the CRB, I think we need to make it clear that any recommendations that come out of that conference is exactly that, is just a recommendation, and that the auditor, whoever it may be at the time, has the ultimate authority to make the final decision. I think that's important to remember that. And then in reference to the changing the wording in the ordinance, in the charter rather, to make it specifically clear-
No, we're not asking you to change the charter.
No, no, I'm not. But anyway, to make it specifically clear, as long as we don't change the intent.
Correct.
We just need to make it clear that they do not have the authority to reopen a closed case because of, and I believe the attorney mentioned this earlier, because of the double jeopardy and labor law violations and the other thing. And then the last thing in the definition of good cause is kind of like the definition of a reasonable person, whatever reasonable person they believe a good cause is, even at that. I mean, it's, it is up to each individual's interpretation. So I think we do need to come up with a better criteria, and whether it be a matrix, as Andrea suggested, or some verbiage that the attorneys and Mark can agree on, I think that needs to be clarified also. And Tim, to you and the rest of folks in CRB, thanks for all the hard work that you do to make this thing really work the way it's been working.
Thanks, George. I like that reasonable person and good cause. I think we should put that in the charter to both the people. I have two people down for second round, and did I miss anyone for first round? No. Okay, George Brown and Andrea.
My questions were answered during the previous discussion. No, thank you.
And I'm just gonna, never mind. Better just-
Okay.
A few quick ones. The Human Rights Commission is doing a conference, planning a conference coming up. I was wondering if you've had a conversation with the CRB of potentially participating in that and having a section of D on the board?
No, actually, what we've been trying to do with the Human Rights Commission is get a meeting, a joint meeting between the Human Rights Commission and the CRB, but they've been involved with other things, so we're still working on that.
Think about that when you have that meeting, have a conversation with them. They're planning that. And so just your opinion about, so we've had new, a bunch of new people on the CRB, and so now they're trained and up to speed and you're-
Well, I don't know if you're ever trained and up to speed. I mean, it's a pretty complex system and it's, my opinion about how the board is functioning right now, or the system as a whole?
Yeah.
I think the board is functioning pretty well. We don't come to consensus in all cases. We look pretty closely. I think that what I've heard from the community is those who attend the meetings and listen, and this includes some people whose cases have been heard by the board relating to a complaint that they may have, is that they feel better once they see the depth that we go into in terms of looking at the cases, albeit they don't have access to the records. I think the new members are being diligent and doing their work. They come from different life experiences and have different, I think, understandings professionally and otherwise of how things might work. One comment that one member has made is he's concerned about the amount of money that is spent on investigations, and to which my comment is, the community, the public, we all have a vested interest in knowing that police officers can thoroughly, completely, and without bias to any party, fully investigate complaints against other police officers. And that takes time and that costs money, but it's an important community value that we have, that at least the community has expressed in this case. We don't have a large enough department where you could afford to have outside investigation of all complaints of officers. So I think right now that the office certainly is functioning, the board is functioning, and I guess my comment would be that I hope that continues. Any event can change the circumstance in the terms of the community's perception, as we all know, at any given time. But I think people are doing their work and doing it well. And I think they're, the outreach, the information that is presented by the auditor's office in the weekly updates and other things, and by the police department itself, gives the community a better sense of what's going on in this case, and I think that's very helpful. So that's a long answer to a short question, so.
That's how you get 20 minutes.
You're good at that. Thank you, Mark. And thank you, Tim. And we're ready for, we're just on time for the next item, which is discussion of gangs.
Thank you, Madam President.
It's here.
Thanks, Tim.
The city manager and police chief will take over now.
Thank you very much. And Pete, I'll turn it over to you and people.
Yes, Greg will be up here. So, yeah, that'd be great.
Before we begin the presentation, I thought I'd give you a little bit of an update on the protests downtown. You might have received my emails over the weekend, but the protest organizers and some peacekeepers ensured that there was a very orderly march that went from downtown around Club Road and back over the Ferry Street Bridge. We, last, in the middle of last week, we had several meetings with the organizers and their attorneys, so we had a very clear agreement between the two of us about what kind of behavior would be tolerated and what wouldn't. And it's gone very smoothly ever since. Our standard approach to planned protests is to have our crisis negotiations team members interact with mostly the leadership, but with the protest participants throughout, and we've continued to do that. So as issues have arisen, we've been able to deal with them in pretty short order. For example, very early this morning, a person in mental health crisis found themselves in the middle of the park blocks there, and we were called to help deal with that, and they were taken into custody for their own safety. And there's been some questions about the availability of public restrooms, so we've helped coordinate that a little bit. Ultimately, the city manager's office dealt with that issue, I think. And I don't know exactly how long the protests will go on, but as long as it remains peaceful and doesn't interfere with other business or other uses of the park, then I think we'll probably let it continue just as it is. Thanks very much for having us here tonight. We're here at the request of the council to make a presentation on street gangs, the nature of street gangs in the Eugene-Springfield area. Detective Harvey is our expert in this. He has, he's been with the police department for many years, has been a detective for quite a few years. We worked together in INET some years back, and he has helped put together extensive investigations that have had interstate implications, working together with the federal government, and is masterful at managing the kind of data that you'll see presented here today. One of the features of street gangs is that they often involve people of color, and in many larger communities particularly, street gangs are race-based organizations. That doesn't happen to be the case in the Eugene-Springfield area, but it is one of the assumptions that many people have about street gangs, and an assumption that is applied here inaccurately. And it's also true that there is a larger, a misproportion of people of color in Eugene-Springfield street gangs. So although they're not race-based, there is out of, out of relation to what you normally see in the community, there are a higher number of people of color in our street gangs. So because of that, we deliberately went out to groups representing communities of color to have a discussion with them in order to make sure that we understand their fears related to that. I know that there are fears that police will engage in racial profiling because of the assumption that gangs are race-based, and I know that there are fears that the community will stereotype people of color because of the same assumptions. So Detective Harvey, as a consequence, has been providing training in the schools and with the media and with a variety of different groups. As I said, we've met with representative groups of communities of color, advocates, people in the correction system, youth advocates, business people. And we also have met with the executives from the local police agencies, the school districts, managers from the school districts, and other service organizations in Lane County to raise the awareness and to begin the organization of a summit that we'll have this next year that will bring some recommended strategies to Lane County for addressing the street gang problem. So with that introduction, I'll hand it over to Detective Harvey.
Thank you, Chief, and thank you, Council, for allowing me to present this information tonight. What I'm going to be talking about is the current gang situation in the Eugene-Springfield area. We don't separate by Eugene and Springfield because the gang members cross I-5. They're in both areas. The goal of the Eugene Police Department is to form the community partnerships to combat the increasing numbers of the street gang members and the crimes that they're committing. And in doing so, we've been meeting with numerous local agencies and instructing them on the current conditions and seeking their assistance to try to rectify the street gang problem before it gets too hard. We're trying to get to the gang members at an earlier age because we are seeing that they are being contacted in their elementary school ages. And so we're trying to contact them through the schools and through the other groups to try to give them some positive influence and a different route to take than the gang members. And as the chief spoke about, we're going to try to have a summit with the community in early 2012. What I'm going to be starting out with, and what I need to let you know, as I presented some handouts with the gang tattoos tonight and the prior, I gave some, the graffiti that is found around it. All of that is from the Eugene-Springfield area. The slide up here is the Eugene area, and I'm going to be starting with a video clip that is over at the Trainsom Park. And what this is, is this is a, this is what it takes to become a gang member. This is what's called a gang jump-in. This is a blood-in, blood-out style of a gang. This is five individuals, they're beating one individual up to become a member. This is at Trainsom Park in November of last year. What you don't see is there's children playing probably within 30 yards of this incident, and there's three other gang members behind a tree. Some of these individuals are adults, and for size, the guy in the white is 300 pounds. So what you see is the commitment, and you have to remember that this is their friend. This is a friend of theirs. As you see, they pick him up now, brush him off, and that is one of the major steps to become in this gang member. This, this gang in particular, you have five members that will beat you. Is this went on for 68 seconds. So to start with is the gang definition that the Eugene Police Department in the state of Oregon uses is the one that's on your handouts and above. And what we look for is the criminal activity. We're not looking for groups of people that might share a group symbol, common name, go do anything. Without the criminal nexus, you know, the Eugene Police Department is not interested in it. There's a particular group that kind of matches all of this, which is insane clown posse or the juggalos around the nation. Some states are classifying them as a gang. At this point, Eugene Police Department is not classifying that as a gang until we see the activity tied to the game being criminal. So that is the nexus that we look for and what we will use. And with this slide, and this is the one that was not on the presentation that you saw, but it's a handout that I provided at the beginning, this is the criteria that we use to document somebody as a gang associate or a gang member. And if you look down here, just somebody that comes up to us and tells us that they're a gang member is not enough for us to document them as a gang member. It takes a lot of research, a lot of information to really show that somebody is a gang member and we document it as. Some of the things that we look for, just for instance, is about three months ago, the night that we met with Andrea Ortiz out at Lane Community College, while we were at that meeting, there was two individuals identified themselves as gangster disciples. They beat up a member that was a vice lord down at LTD station. So they admitted themselves as gang members. Both of them had gang tattoos tying them to the gangster disciples, and they were assaulting a vice lord, which is a rival gang. That, and all that is what we would look at to identify somebody as a gang member and document them as such. A breakdown of gangs is, easy way to look at, the national gangs that everybody will really quite often hear is the Bloods, the Crips, the Serenios, Nortenos, not so much Folk Nation, People Nation. Those are classified more as banners. Those are the banners that most of the gang sets fall under. The prison, or the gang members and the gangs that we see out here are actual sets. So what they break down to, we have small neighborhood or local sets, and those are usually formed by just small friends that decide to form a gang. And usually we'll see them around, and the ones we have seen here is, we have Barger Street Locos, the River Road Gangster Bloods, Ruby Avenue Bloods, Young Ass Kings and Crazy Ass Ladies. Those are classified as local or neighborhood gangs. That doesn't mean that they will stay that way. We had a gang, Westside Gangsters, that started out as a neighborhood gang, ended up going into prison, and out of prison they've come back, and now they are considered a prison gang. But they started out as a local gang here in Eugene. Now they are statewide. State and prison gang sets are just that. They control and they cover the state of Oregon. Ones that we have around here are Westside Gangsters. We've identified our Organized Aryan Crime Syndicate, which came out of prison, and we have some members of the Brown Pride Jaconess Tracee, that is, their main group is up in the Salem area, but we have members here. You also have some of the larger street gangs that come out of Los Angeles area, and when I say large, usually that's the, just the names. They bring up here, they usually come here, one or two members that move up here, one reason or another. When they get here, they start setting- When they get here, they start setting up shop, they start recruiting, they start building their case and all of a sudden we have a gang set. Uh, some of the ones that we've seen around here that are, have the direct ties back to the Los Angeles or bigger cities, we have South Side Loma Tracees, we have South Side San Bernardino Tracees, South Side Lenox Tracees, Pomona 12th Street and Barrio Los Pedrinos Tracee. Those are all tied down to the Los Angeles area or bigger cities, but now they have sets set up here in the Eugene Springfield area. And we also go into the regional gang sets that classify, you know, would be like the Northwest, that just, they go outside the boundaries of the state, boundaries of the cities. Some of the ones we see around here are the European Kindred, which is a, a prison gang that is now members are back out on the street and they still have their gang going and turning into a street gang. South Side Playboy Tracee, uh, we have a set here that are tied directly up to the Yakima area and they also come out of the, uh, Los Angeles area. They've been around for excess of 40 to 50 years. Uh, we have Hangout Boys here. We have Fresno Bulldogs, which is a set that comes out of the Fresno area, a large Northern California street gang. And we have Vatos Locos. Then we have the nationally-based gangs and when, what makes them different is these gangs nationwide have upwards of 100,000 gang members. So the 18th Street has members and sets throughout most of the states and they total in nearer the 100,000 population. Same with MS-13 or Maris Salvatutra Tracee. The Gangster Disciples are an organization out of the Chicago area. We have a large number of them here. Uh, and Aryan Brotherhood is, uh, mainly a Northwest, but they're spread out throughout the, uh, the country, along as with West Side Pyro. Getting into the local gangs we have here, we don't follow the Los Angeles-style neighborhood gangs. Our gangs are set up, we might have one gang that has members living in Eugene, living in Springfield, living in Crestwell, living in Cottage Grove, or some of the other surrounding areas. There's not one neighborhood that will control and hold one gang. Most of them are spread out throughout the Springfield Eugene area and that's why we feel it's important to stay on top of that. As Pete talked about, race around the gangs in the Eugene Springfield area does not play a role. Traditional black gangs, Crips and Bloods and traditional Sereno gangs or Latino gangs, Serenos and Norteños are accepting of all different races into, uh, those gangs. They are shooting for numbers, although that does not play affect once it goes into prison. Prison, it's still heavily segregated, so a white gang member out here that's a member of a traditionally black gang will not be accepted in prison once they go there. Some of the ages that we're seeing of actual gang members are anywhere from 12 to 25 years of age, but we've seen them as old as actively in their 40s. So it's not over and it's not something that they just grow out of it. One thing that you have to realize is at the beginning, that video you saw, that makes them a gang member. At that point, they become property of that gang. It's not something they can just sit and say, "I'm, I'm done now, I'm just going to go my own way." Because what you saw was blood in. To get out, there's blood out. And usually that blood out is coming at a lot harder method than what it was beginning with. And it usually might be several times. It might be every time this gang sees you, they're going to be beating you. So it's not something that, why don't these guys just, uh, you know, quit being gang members? It's not that easy because you are property. As I mentioned, the young children in the area, we, as we've been talking with community members and community organizations, we are becoming more and more aware of our elementary school kids being contacted by adult gang members and older gang members trying to be influenced into going into the gangs. This is where we're trying to set up with the school districts to try to get the counselors and the teachers to be able to rec, uh, recognize this and try to route them a different area. Give them a positive role instead of going into the gang. We want them to get into a different positive outlook so we don't have to deal with it because law enforcement is not going to be the answer to this gang issue. It's going to be a community group. We, we are seeing the gang numbers increasing and we do not know why. There is numerous ways, whether it's the glorifying of the gang members on TV, on MTV or any of the, uh, other media outlets where they are glorified because that's what gets somebody into the gang, when they see that they can make money, the women are there or any other, uh, power with them. But again, that gets them in, we don't know what, uh, it's not as easy to get out. We're seeing second and third generation gang members where there's, their parents, their grandparents were gang members. We have several parents around right now that are providing active aid to their gang, their sons or daughters' gangs. Um, and that becomes a little bit harder because that provides alibis for them. It provides the riders, uh, to get around the area. We're seeing the migrating gang members from around the country. We've been able to identify over 30, gang members from over 38 states and 10 countries that are here locally at this point. We've identified over 140 different gang sets and, and they're not gang, the full gang sets here, but there might be one, two members from over 140 different sets. And what that does is that provides the influence. It only takes one person to start building up their gang. Uh, what started in Portland back in the eighties was a family of West Side 18th Street moved up to Portland. West Side 18th Street is now the largest Sereno gang in the state of Oregon. So when I say 140 different sets, that's influence from 140 different sets that we've been able to identify. One of the things that we've also been identifying is we've been hearing the, you know, I call it a myth, that some of these gang members are only joining the gangs because of the police harassment. I didn't provide gang training until January of this year to the Eugene Police Department. Before that, most of the department had no idea what some, who some of these gang members were. Most of the gang members that we're looking at were a long time into the gang. So some of these guys have been gang members now for five-plus years. So other things that we're hearing from the community is, well, it's just gang on gang. You know, who really cares about if a gang member goes and hurts? What I'll tell you is that should not be acceptable in this community because for one, a bullet fired from a gun does not tell the difference between a gang member and an innocent bystander. And that violence always leads over to innocent parties. So one of the things we're also seeing going back to the migrating is back in the seventies, eighties and even in the nineties, when gang members moved away from Los Angeles or back east or wherever they're coming from, they usually didn't have that tie directly back to them. What we saw is they'd have to be long-distance calls, which just wasn't made. Well, now with the advent of Facebook, MySpace, Twitter, instant messaging, Skype, they have continuous communication back with their gang members and we see this. We have talked with gang members that tell us that they are continually, uh, communicating with their gang from their mother chapter. So even though we may only have a small group here, if they have a chapter up in Portland that might have 20, 30 members, they have access to that. They have the drugs, they have the weapons, they have the staffing to be able to come down here and be able to provide whatever backup they need. And one of the things that we're also trying to get in the use of the term wannabe, because of age, we have a lot of, even the community members and police officers that refer to the younger gang members in particular as wannabes. This individual in particular, he came to Eugene from Atlanta, Georgia. He told the police, he told the public that he was a gang member. He associated with other known gang members. He wore the attire of other gang members. It wasn't until he tried to kill somebody this year that people started going, "Oh, he might be a gang member." You know, if they consider themselves a gang member and they perform all the requirements to be a gang member, they are a gang member. I have spoke with older gang members and their biggest fear are the young ones because they have something to prove and they are trying to get higher and they're not afraid of the system at this point. Chief Kearns talked about how we've been, uh, reaching out to the community and giving education and meeting with, uh, community members. This is some of the, uh, people we have met with just this year, uh, and we continually meet. Uh, we have scheduled meetings for tomorrow and later this, uh, later this month and we will continue to do it because the chief has determined that this issue is a top priority. And we believe that the only way that this, there's going to be an answer to the gang problem is by having community involvement. You saw the video of the gang initiation. What, what you have to understand is these things are going on in public venues. We have heard of gang, uh, jump-ins at North Eugene High School, at the Riviera Center, at Maury Jacobs Park, in the bathrooms, at Sheldon, not Sheldon House School, I'm sorry, at Churchill High School. Um, these are occurring out in the public where innocent parties might happen to bond, think that there is an assault going on and accidentally get involved. What happens is, when you saw that video at the beginning, if anybody tries to break that up, it's just like a domestic assault where you know, you're not trying to rescue one and you have five, you have nine to 10 people that are now against you. And that's part of the problem is, is the public would have to recognize this. And some of the gang jump-ins occur literally 13 seconds is one of the shortest ones we've seen. And some of them, we heard of one that was three minutes, which is a little bit hard to believe, but sometimes by the time people recognize it, they are over. I've already talked about the, once it becomes, uh, once you're jumped in and you become property of the gang, what, it just isn't this short-term process. You know, to become a gang member, there is recruitment, there is the education, there is putting in the work, there is a vote by the gang, and then there's a jump-in and sometimes there is also, uh, an initiation where the subject is required to commit a crime to get the trust of that gang. And some of the crimes that the gang members are committing here locally, heavily into prostitution, we are seeing large numbers of weapons and firearms are their preferred weapon. We're, they're dealing drugs, they're committing street robberies, home invasion robberies, bank robberies, uh, numerous assaults, and these are not just assaults on the other gang members, these are assaults on regular, uh, law-abiding citizens. And we've had several attempted murders just this year and we had one murder successful, I think it was two years ago. These are some of the major crimes that have occurred just this year that are directly attributed to street gangs. We've had an attempted murder by stabbing, attempted murder by shooting. We've had numerous assaults around the West University area that were tied directly to the gangs. We've had numerous street robberies. We've had, I think upwards of at least four bank robberies that were done by gang members, businesses that were robbed, residential burglaries and stolen vehicles. Going into the graffiti part, one of the things that we've had a problem with and it's not just because of the Eugene Police Department, it's because of the prosecution, lack of prosecution, where most of the community believes that graffiti will not be worth calling the police. And that's one of the things that we're, we're trying to meet with the community members and to be able to, uh, get that rectified. But what, uh, what we need to pass out is not all the graffiti that you see out there on the walls, on the businesses, on the buildings, on the vehicles are gang-related. I would estimate probably only 25% or less of the graffiti that's out there is actually gang-involved. But the other things that we have to put out in the stereotypes is this graffiti is not being done by juveniles alone. We have numerous adult gangs that are going out there and tagging up. The West Side Gangsters are prisoners, ex-cons, and most of them have already done all their time in the state prison, but we see WSG graffiti throughout City of Eugene. So we know, we've know of a 35-year-old that was doing graffiti. So it's just not the juveniles that are doing it. We also know that the gangs use this to mark their territory, they announce their presence, and then they're also sending messages to other gang members. Most of the time, the public won't understand what those messages are, but we know that the gang members themselves do learn that. And the gangs take it serious. We've known that some of the crossing out, and that's what you saw at the beginning there, was crossing out of another gang by a rival gang. That leads to gang violence. One of the things that we're trying to do with the, uh, community groups is to form better relations with them so we do get notified because we find it's great information to be able to identify the street gang, gang members, and then potential threats or potential, uh, violence that might be coming out of, uh, that graffiti. And as I sent out, uh, the handout, uh, a week prior, this is how much the increase in the street gangs are in Eugene. Last week alone, we found two brand-new street gangs graffiti. The Rebel Tracee Vario and the Five Deuce Hoover Gangster Crips, uh, ta-tagged up an area last week alone. So we see the increase, you know, weekly. And I mentioned that, you know, we were having a problem with getting the community to accept and to contact the police regarding the graffiti. This is one night. One gang went out, hit 65 different locations, lots and lots of damage. We had one individual report that to the police. We ended up having to go knock on, well, I think we contacted at least 40, 45 individuals, uh, to contact them and let them know about the graffiti and that it's not acceptable in the, uh, City of Eugene. But out of this, came this. This is the retaliation and the threats that come back. That graffiti that was done on the prior slide was done by the Brown Pride Locotis. They went over into the area of some West Side 18th Street gang members. 18th Street gang members know who did it. This is right outside one of the apartment complexes of one of the individuals that did the graffiti. This is another part where he'd have to walk away. This is at North Eugene High School with the note. Along with, he posted a photograph of himself with a handgun. The individual from the Brown Pride Locotis told us that he got the message. That was a veiled threat with the photograph. So this type of stuff does lead to violence. This is South Eugene High School, uh, November of last year. The same weekend Springfield High School was targeted by the same group of people along with some of the several, uh, streets. This ended up costing several thousand dollars of the community's money to put this back to the way it should be. We've now got prosecution for, the district attorney has agreed to prosecute this type of gang member and we had this individual plead guilty to a felony, but he didn't learn his lesson. Literally within the last month, he has struck again over in the, uh, Springfield High School and over in the Fifth Avenue area. So I'll, I'll leave it nice and, uh, short and sweet and just expect, uh, answer any questions that you have.
Thank you for cheering us up.
Yeah.
Thank you. Well, Chief Kearns, thank you for bringing this forth. I had, um, kind of been riding you about having a presentation at council and I do appreciate the ability for all of us to, to, um, have the same view of what's going on in our community. This is very concerning, but I just kind of had a little, uh, question for Detective Harvey. So once upon a time, the Free Souls were, um, kind of the, the gang in the community and it was mostly Aryan, white pride-type gangs. So when did the, when did this change?
The Free Souls are still in our community.
Yeah, I know.
And they're considered an outlaw Maricopa gang.
Mm-hmm.
So they're still around, they still have some of the problems with some of these various street gangs.
Mm-hmm.
And so they're very much still on, uh, the radar, so to speak.
So my question was, when did, when did the tide change?
That the street gangs have taken over?
That it was predominantly Aryan-type gangs. I mean, at one point, I, I've been, I was on the Police Commission, I was on the Human Rights Commission at one point. The statistics were that most of the gangs were around white pride.
We, we still, we still see it.
And so, and so are they not classified in this? Or are they labeled under a different?
They're, uh, the, the outlaw, or the outlaw Maricopa gangs are considered a different, they have their own, uh, tag, and same with the supremacy groups.
Mm-hmm.
Because the way that we separate them is the supremacy groups do it out of hate. They're at a higher level, uh, that we're looking at. Street gang crimes are, uh, or, or street gangs are committing different levels.
Okay, so, so what?
So they're at a higher.
Okay, so what is the ratio, would you say, just kind of like, you know, 50/60, 50/50? Would you say there's more of these street gangs?
I'd, yes, there is much more street gangs right now, but, uh, what we also have seen is, uh, back in the, oh, probably about decade ago, we hit some of the local supremacy groups really hard.
Mm-hmm.
And what that did is that pushed a lot of them underground. Uh, we still know that they're out here, they're just not as visible, uh, as some of the street gang members. So we are still looking at them. We, we are seeing some of the Volksfront graffiti, uh, in the community. Uh, I think it was Saturday night, I got a phone call regarding some swastikas that were being placed on, uh, with chalk on the sidewalk. And so we're still seeing it, but it's just not as visible, but we still...
And so we're still seeing it, it's just not as visible, but we still know that it's around.
Okay, so this is just, this primarily, this street gang thing is primarily the?
It's one segment of what we do.
Okay, okay.
And I could tell you that we hit the supremacy groups much harder, because it's purely hate.
All righty. I'll get on the next round and let other people know what's to say.
Thank you, Madam President. I, you know, Councilor Ortiz asked the main question that I wanted to have answered, and did a very good job of responding. But ever so briefly, Chief, I just want to offer accolades to the EPD for handling what was potentially a tense situation this weekend in the face of what was actually the largest crowd ever assembled in Eugene, which was the football game. And for you to handle it as well as you did in such an amazing fashion, I just wanted to pass that along.
Thank you.
George Brown?
Thank you. All of the graffiti was local.
Yes.
What about these tattoos?
Every one of them is local.
These are all from local guys?
Yes.
Yeah. What's the, what's the biggest gang in the area? How many members?
Roughly, we have, you know, we know of approximately over 30 18th Street gang members, but they are not all, what, 18th Street is being broken down. You have Northside 18th Street, you have Westside 18th Street, you have Southside 18th Street. And so we don't, we don't know if they all operate as the same gang, but they're under the 18th Street banner. Most of our gangs around here are right around the 8 to 12. Some of our bigger ones, we have in the 20s.
Okay. Does 18th Street refer to our 18th Street, or is that from another city?
It's out of Los Angeles.
LA?
It's that National 18th Street, which has numbers of upwards of 100,000.
Because I know, I know, it wasn't there then, there was the Westside Gang, right? They were like one of the older gangs around local.
Westside Gangsters, yes, they were formed here, and then they turned into a prison gang, and then as people are getting out, and that one just grew. That one started out as a local or a neighborhood gang, and it just grew.
So that's different from Westside, too?
Yes. Yeah, the, the Westside alone doesn't identify any. I mean, it is, you know, we have lots of Westside, Southside, there is, you have to look at the whole name to be able to identify.
Sure, yeah. Okay, thank you.
Mike?
Thank you. Appreciate very much the information and presentation. I got the chance to see Detective Harvey's presentation initially about six or seven months ago at the police commission. That presentation was, I think, about 15 or 20 minutes longer. We had a little more time to go into even more detail, and I, it, it kind of shocked me when I saw it. I was aware of a lot of this, but not aware of the depth of the issue. That's why I pushed at the time to have this brought to council, so that we could all talk about it. And it's also why I put some motions into our budget process to deal and address this. You mentioned some plans for this next year. Is there anything, Chief, you can talk about in terms of the sort of plans you have in place to begin to deal with this differently?
There are, the short answer is no, but there are strategies that are effective around the country, and hopefully we can bring speakers here so that we can all be thinking together about, excuse me, what might apply to Eugene. Medford has a strategy that they're happy with. I'm going to meet with the chief and one of his captains next week to learn a little more about it. But most involve schools, churches, police, social service, Department of Youth, and probably others.
Okay, thank you.
George Floyd?
Chief, and Detective Harvey, and Sergeant McKee, thank you for bringing this forward. I just hope that the entire community gets an opportunity to see this type of information. And Andrea, in answer to your question, and when did this start? I remember back, I think Scott, you were doing an internship in the jail as a student, and you started seeing some of these gangs coming into our area, and that was late, late 80s, early 90s, but it was just, just a trickle. And left unchecked, it's now a big flood. And this is something that people have to take seriously, because it is, it is a dangerous situation. It is a very dangerous situation. So again, thanks for bringing the information forward to us, and I hope people do get a chance to see this, this information.
Andrea, you want to say?
Well, George, what I was trying to get was the weight of the amount of gang members. I know it's been here for a while, but, but I guess everybody sees things a little bit differently, so. You know, this really kind of concerns me as a, as a community member, that we, we don't have already a way to address this. I think about these kids, and I came from an area that was pretty gang-ridden, and actually that's one of the reasons I left Southern California. And, you know, what I do know about poverty and about the inability to reach the American dream is that you look for other ways to feel included. And I, and I think that that is the one piece that gangs do provide for people, just like, you know, our homeless youth down on downtown, is that they find camaraderie. And whether people jump into gangs for safety, or for identification, or for whatever reason, or they're just, you know, wannabe felons, you know, it's that they're finding their camaraderie. And as a society, it's not, not any, like you said, for, I don't know, Detective Harvey, if you're the one who said it, or Pete, it isn't just the police department's problem, it really is a communal issue. And so I'm hoping that whatever strategies you come up with, that we're able to, to bring this along, because this, it's really kind of upsetting, you know? I know, I've, I have family members who have decided to go down this path in Southern California, and there's no gaining them back. And it's, they're just gone. And there really is nothing you can do to, to bring them back, once they're really entrenched in the gangs. And so, I don't know, I just wanted to lend a human, a human face to it, because I just feel like that it is a whole community's responsibility. And the other question I just had off the top of my head, it was a meeting in Trainsong the other night, and the message that I heard was not as concerning as this information is. So is this information available for the public? I mean, it is part of our packet. So if I wanted to share this with my neighborhood folks, it'd be okay?
Yes, and we've, we've provided this presentation to a couple of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I know River Road mentioned that you guys have been out there, but I know the folks in Trainsong have had more on-the-street issues with this community, and, I mean, to the point where they, they have vigilante thoughts. And so, okay, good, thank you.
You know, if I could add just a couple of things in response to what Counselor Ortiz asked. The, the gang problem in the Eugene-Springfield area, you might recall, became more intense in the 90s, as a community we addressed it. Our violent crimes detectives have said that they don't think it's ever really gone away, and that's probably true. It's one of those conditions that you don't really know exists until you receive a little information about it. And when Greg started providing training to our police officers, they started recognizing gang members when they saw them, and they're conducting their own interviews and verifying and gathering information for us. There was a time this last year when there were a lot of young people wearing red downtown. Some of them were gang members. Around that time, we received reports, and we saw firsthand that there were assaults being committed by a street gang in the West University neighborhood. So we put out a press release asking for victims to report the crimes to us, and they didn't. In fact, when we've contacted victims after we've seen them assaulted, they refuse to, to file a report. So it's a very, it is a more subtle problem than we've realized, and just educating our police has allowed us to deal with it better. We've put together an ad hoc gang response team, and we've done a lot of work just within our department. When Greg provided the training to school staff at the local school districts, the teachers there are now starting to recognize the gang activity in and around the school and among the families. And I think the, we're taking a smart and deliberate approach to this by first ensuring that all the staff that can help with the solution, all the organizations that can help with the solution to this, first know what to look for, and then they see it in real life, so that when it comes time to get, to together come up with a strategy that'll be effective, we'll all be, we'll all be ready for it.
I just have one more question. So I know that you put the list of administrators, so has, and I know that 4J had some kind of an event, did Bethel participate in that event?
Yes.
And so you haven't done any presentations to the Bethel School District, or, I mean, because that, that community has had historical problems for many years, and that's where some of the local.
Well, we, we had a meeting with executives and provided them with background on all this, and had a discussion about how we can work together, and Colt Gill was there for that, but I don't know if we've done training in Bethel School District yet.
Other than that, so, but we've been keeping our school resource officers up, and then they've been talking with their staff around also, and so we're working through a lot of the school resource officers.
Okay. Thank you.
Ellen's on the first round, so I have you down for a second, Mike, but Ellen.
So, so, thanks, Detective Harvey, this is a very good presentation. This is a, it's a big problem. So can you, you've kind of mentioned some of the things that we're doing. Can you kind of list the things that we're doing about this? And, you know, you talked about training our officers and going out to schools, but kind of comprehensively, kind of go through all the things that we're doing?
We've, we've pretty much covered what we've been doing so far, and we're going to continue meeting with different community groups and, and schools and youth services. The purpose of this presentation was just to make you aware of the nature of the problem. I think we're going to be on the agenda again in November or December, where we'll go over some of the solutions that we have in place, and that we're planning toward.
Can I add one thing? I mean, we're also, we're meeting with ex-gang members that have successfully got out, and we're trying to get some of them to be able to come back and provide this mentorship and provide that information, because it's easy for me to say, this is the way to get out.
You're right.
They did it. And so that's some of the things that we're trying to reach out for.
Mike?
Well, I just wanted to mention real quickly, it was in the conversation there about the kids downtown versus this, and I'd ask you, I suppose, to talk about, to the extent you can, the amount of gang activity in our downtown area.
I'd say, starting at probably around February, where we really started seeing an increase in the gang activity, but it goes back to late December, where we had a large gang fight that was called in out by the library, and then the very next day, downtown LTD station was full of gang members that were trying to retaliate, and we watched, and when I say watched, we were, received information that for two weeks, there were gang jump-ins, where two members would find one out, and they'd beat him up, so that was continuing. We have several gangs that consider downtown the area, but with the increased number of the bike officers that were there, some of those gang members were pushed away, they didn't want that focus on them, and so they, they left and went to other places. But we were receiving, you know, backdoor information, because, again, a lot of these gang members will pick the people that they know won't report, and so we are hearing through backdoors of street robberies that were occurring regularly down in the downtown area, where they were stealing either drugs, stealing a small piece of property or money.
I was hearing that from a lot of people in the downtown area before, several months ago, and certainly this summer, too, especially at 420 Park and all that sort of things.
Yes.
Thanks.
Ellen?
So that kind of makes it sound like the only part of the city that's involved in gang activity is downtown. Obviously, that's true, that's one hotspot that, and it moves around. Where are the areas that are?
The gang activity affects most of Eugene-Springfield. As Counselor Ortiz mentioned, Trainsong Park area, they've seen their fair share of gang activity. But it, it's wherever there might be an activity. I mean, we've had where there'll be a large concert going on, and where the gangs, it's mostly a gang. Because what, what we also see is, we see Portland gangs coming down to the Eugene area to hold some of their parties. And we had one, I think it was two years ago, where it was a large, they had rented the whole place out, and we received information there's possibly going to be a retaliation coming. So even with our own area, there, I couldn't pinpoint say that there is a place that we're not seeing some kind of gang activity, because it just moves around.
So it's not in any one place, it's all over the city?
Yes, and it's, that's where I'm talking about, where it's not neighborhood-based, where it might be gang members from all over the Eugene-Springfield area, or even outside of that, and they might come together, have meetings, or have a party, or some other function, and then that becomes the problem, because then they go around and the, it's so much about respect. And so if they seem like they're disrespected by anybody, that's where violence starts.
Anyone else? I have, is it dangerous to wear red?
No.
People, I mean.
No, the, the time that we're seeing it, because when you see the attire, it's not just that. I mean, the gang members are literally, you know, embroidering the gang names on it, they're applying the gang names on it. Now, it would be risky if you were not a gang member and you were saying that you were. And we have heard that in particular, where we've had individuals that were down the mall that were wearing the red and claiming to be a gang member, but they weren't, and so they were beat up by that gang, because they were claiming something that was not theirs.
Anyone have any last words, Chief? You have any last words?
Well, I look forward to being back in November or December and giving you the answers to the questions that you're asking. I think our, our school districts are motivated to correct this problem, so I think we're going to have good partners there.
Andrea has the last word.
I'm sorry, I was just wanting to reiterate what I heard. One of the things that I heard was that we really, folks out in the community really need to report the graffiti. I think that that is, that is really important, because it may look like nothing to you, but it does definitely signify something. So I would just encourage people, if they have graffiti, is there a number that you want them to call, or do you want them to take a picture and email it, or tell me what your preference would be?
I've been giving my number, literally before this meeting started, I got a phone call to identify another gang graffiti location. So I haven't called my number, the 682-5174, because we do go out and look at every one of the calls, because it, it could be the thing that we're looking for, to identify a prom issue.
Okay.
And the other thing, on top of the graffiti, report all the crimes, because we are hearing major crimes, I mean, shots fired calls and violence that aren't getting reported, and we're hearing that we have community members that are leaving our area because of the gang issue. And so we know this is going on, we're hearing it, we just, we ask to get that information.
Thank you.
That number, that was 682-5174?
Yes.
That's the number to call if you have graffiti. Thank you. Anything else?
Nope, thank you.
Thank you. Please adjourn.